I think we had months to get out, so we had to go and scramble and find some other place where we've moved in on Swanton Street. But I would also say that we're not sure of our long-term prospects on Swanton Street. We've put a lot of money into the property, but you know, there's a building going on, eventually, I guess, a building going on next door on the corner site. We're a little bit concerned, you know, we have a three-year lease on it. We're a little bit concerned about what happens after that three years, especially if there's a project in there with, you know, retail and condos and a developer starts looking at the property we're in and saying, you know, we could put, you know, 25 condos in there and offer our elderly landlord, landlady, you know, a fantastic amount of money for it. So, we're also waiting, hopefully by the, well, by August, we should know what our future funding is because we're still in the process of negotiating two contracts, two licenses with the Horizon, the Comcast. So, my personal opinion would be, get the building, gut it out, restore the envelope on it. It's going to take a year or two, but, and again, as a resident, I would think, rather than having the school administration up here is move into a permanent home there. Or, or not, but, you know, it could be, again, I'm not expressing the opinion of the board at this point, but it could be that we might have a renewed interest in the property. So, and I'm happy to give any perspective on what we, we looked at. It is pretty horrifying inside, but we had a whole plan drawn up to gut it out and rebuild it. And like I said, the financing was verbally in place. One of the local banks had said they looked at our, our books and they said, yeah, we wouldn't have a problem financing that. So, at the time, we had got a quote of about 1.2 million to restore the building, probably more now. There were also questions about where was town property? Did we have to apply to, you know, right-to-work rules and things like that, which would have increased the cost? So, could we do it privately as WinCam or would the town have to do it? So, that would, that would have affected the cost.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ellen.
And to catch anybody who might be on, have just joined us on WinCam Up, we just are finishing public comment and we're going to begin a school committee discussion about the Carriage House facility, bringing us up to date with what the current information we have about it. I am going to remind our committee members that we do have a hard stop at 11 o'clock this morning, so we'll need to end our meeting by 11, unfortunately. That's, that's the length of time we have. If we'll need to continue the discussion at a future meeting, we can do that. But, the next update I'd like is Dr. Evans and Ellen, if you want to jump in with where the town is and the information we have from Lisa Wong as town manager about what their thoughts are going forward on the spring town meeting vote on the $100,000 that was approved to do evaluation and schematic design of the Carriage House.
So, the, I think the purpose of meeting today is not to make any final recommendation related to final disposition of the Carriage House or even make any decisions about moving ahead with schematic design because the concern is that we may not have enough information about the current condition in 2020. Given continued deterioration of the site, we wanted to get more information before we invested the $100,000 in the schematic design to move ahead with planning for either central office or some other use for the facility. I don't think there is anyone who wants to see a loss of the Carriage House, but we are concerned about the current condition. And so, when I asked the town manager to look into the delay in moving ahead on schematic design, I think that there were some concerns raised about the current condition, which I think were legitimate. So, the DPW has been tasked with doing some additional investigation, both in terms of mold, asbestos, structural, and to consult with Roof, to consult with their partners to give a report to the town manager around the current condition of the Carriage House before we make a final determination about whether we want to move ahead with schematic design or pursue some other path. And so, I think that's, it's good to be cautious about this. Ultimately, we need to revisit the recommendations of the master plan. As several people have pointed out, the central office staff members are kind of perched here at Parkhurst. We are expending considerable dollars to put in an elevator here, which will allow us to access the whole site. It's highly likely that we'll have to use this for a school or as part of the school within the next couple of years. And long-term, it's not a great place for central office for a variety of reasons. It's, it's too large for a central office, it's not configured well. It's, it's a school, there are classrooms, and a single person perched in a classroom-sized room is not a good use. But the space cannot be subdivided easily because of heating and cooling, ventilation. The systems in this school aren't really, can't really provide for that. So, we, at some point, need to make a determination about where central office is going to go. But also, I think, be cognizant of the town's capacity to fund multiple projects at the same time and to be very thoughtful about that. Lynch School is moving ahead. That will be a costly endeavor. That'll result in a great facility. There is a possibility that central office could be tacked on, although we bear 100% of those costs and MSBA does not reimburse for that.
But we would for the Carriage House as well.
And we, but we would for the Carriage House as well. So, we have lots of decisions to make and today is not the day to make decisions, but this is more for me to provide a recommendation to you that we defer moving ahead on schematic design until the DPW has had a chance to report back on the current condition. So, we know whether investing additional monies in the Carriage House for a schematic design are feasible. And so, my recommendation to you is this is a good chance to ask questions. I think, I'm very grateful to the town officials, including Ellen Knight, who put together a great packet from the archives that gave us a good history of the Carriage House over a number of years and reading the reports from the DPW on the existing conditions as they see it and then the plan that they have that I think is pretty solid. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is more of a, a chance to sort of put a pause, do another assessment, and then have a further discussion. At some point, we will need to make a determination about the building, the cost to renovate, save it, or access it. And, but today's not the day to make that determination because we don't have all the information.
And because the town and the town manager is moving forward with doing some assessment on the building, we also thought it was important that all the committee members had the whole history, had the conditions that we have seen in the past, to know what's happened between those last assessments and now, and to make sure that this committee was well-informed about the Carriage House. Because most of the decisions made by the Carriage House, as, as Jack pointed out, so clearly, the only member of our committee who was part of those decisions at the time was Mr. Nixon. So, we wanted to make sure that, while none of us will have all the knowledge Mr. Nixon has in his head, perhaps we will all be as well-informed as Mr. Nixon with the background that we have here.
What's the timeline for the DPW to get back with its updated hazmat report? I thought this was, I thought, I thought this was dated February 5th, 2020, but now I see it says 2017. The VFA document that...
Oh, that's the last one.
That's the most recent VFA document.
That's not the current.
That's not the current one.
So, but what's their timeline?
Um, I think a couple of months would be reasonable.
That will be in report form?
Yes, it'll come as a report from DPW to Lisa Wong and then she'll share.
I believe they might be using consultants as DPW.
They are, yes.
So, it won't all strictly be done in-house if they see a need to.
Yeah, I think most of it will not, in fact, be done in-house. I think it most, it's mostly consultants. You know, we already have an asbestos abatement consultant. We have a roofing consultant that's coming in to do a check on all the roofs.
All the school buildings.
All the school buildings. I don't know about the town buildings. He'll need to, he'll bring in a mold consultant. We've used, we've used air quality consultants in the past. This is not atypical. We, we use these, DPW uses these consultants very regularly and we've, we've had them in the schools and we know who our trusted partners are and I think we will be able to work with them and get some good information. Since the building is not occupied, the building is currently in a status of nobody is allowed to access it. The power's off, there's no heat, there's no electricity going into the building because it is considered to be not able to be occupied or accessed, not safe to be occupied or accessed. And so, the consultants will come in and do their bit and then DPW will give us some information. If we want it, further information after that, we'll, we'll need to ask and do more detailed studies of issues like systems and structures. I think right now, we're starting with sort of health and safety.
Foundation structural.
Mm-hmm. So, that, so that's where we are and I think, you know, we had, so a little bit of a pause on making any decision about this right now.
And so, they wanted, with their timing of a few months, then they want to meet in advance of town meeting or...
There's no, there's no requirement, there's no additional action required by town meeting to advance the schematic design if the, if the town and the school committee decide that's already been approved by town meeting.
Tina, I have a couple of questions. So, schematic design does not include that work, that pre-assessment kind of work of, of the roof, the mold, asbestos, correct?
So, I don't think that, I don't think the cost for that was built into the $100,000. Chris could probably speak more to what the architect would do to, as part of updating the plans on the schematic design and in terms of that.
Before you answer that, let me just...
Yeah, go ahead.
My second question. My second question is, has there been a study or consider, and I'm so sorry, I missed public comment, but I think I heard a WinCam representative, Ellen, say that WinCam was interested in the space potentially? Has there been a conversation or a, a study of potential occupants in addition to school, central office?
Not recently.
Not for a long time.
It's kind of a small space or is it a big?
It's actually a pretty large space.
4,800 square feet.
And so, it could fit multiple uses?
So, there hasn't been any discussion in recent years, but when, before the high school project started, WinCam was, was expressed in intention, this was in the big packet that Ellen sent, that I sent on the weekend.
Ellen, not Ellen.
Ellen Knight.
Yeah.
Ellen Knight sent on the weekend, that I forwarded from Ellen Knight's research. The, it was nice to be reminded that WinCam actually had intended to move in, but the timeline to get it renovated was too quick. The high school, because of a phased-occupied construction, decided to start at the back part of the building, which bumped WinCam out, which meant WinCam had to go somewhere else. And so, that never moved forward. So, we have, the school committee and the school department has not had any conversations with anyone about reusing the Carriage House and any other purpose. I think that's a whole other discussion about whether we would want to involve other partners.
Because we have SEAM Collaborative interested in space, we have a...
The Historical Society is also.
Interested in that space. So, my point is just that, even if it becomes, because our priority is classroom space for students, if the priority of the Winchester Historical Society and Commission and WinCam and others in the community is that space, there is room to hand off the priority and the, the work and the financing with our blessing to make that space occupiable if other segments of our population have a vested interest in its historical nature and in the fact that it's good space.
So, if I can, I'd like, can I respond to your questions?
Absolutely.
Sort of in reverse order. So, so there were a number of interested parties that, back in 2012, we solicited what we called non-binding statements of interest. One of the other constraints the committee should be aware of is the occupancy of the building has to comply with zoning. So, if you have a school function, one of the respondents was actually a preschool from a neighboring town, that would be compliant. Certain municipal uses, or we call quasi-municipal uses, would be compliant, so WinCam's proposal was compliant in that respect. Importantly, the committee should be aware that both the preschool proposal and the WinCam proposal were predicated on this idea that, in fact, the school committee would not surplus the building, but sort of lease the building, like we leased the lower level of Mystic, as the committee is aware, that we would lease it for, you know, some low amount of money per month. And the idea is that a prospective tenant was willing to step up and make a larger capital investment. And in going with the lease route, we actually would then frankly just still maintain the controlling interest of the building and the property, much like, again, we do with Mystic, not knowing what the future holds. This was of real importance to the committee at that time because going back to 2009, as, as Jack indicated this morning from the Historic Commission, there had been increasing pressure for the school committee to surplus the building because the question was, well, what are you going to do with it? School committee has repeatedly, over some number of years, been uncomfortable with the idea of surplusing the building because, because what that means is then you literally give it back to the town. So, then the select board would sort of be in the driver's seat to decide. The Historic Society's request, and again, Jack explained this earlier, I know before you could visit us today, but, but that's basically what happened to the Sandborne House. Back in the 70s and early 80s, central office was actually located at the Sandborne House. That was a school property. And it was ultimately surplus to the town. So, they're kind of two very different models. If, if we were to consider some use that's not central office, I think what's really important in any analysis is, so are we giving the building back to the town or are we keeping it to facilitate some sustained use? Jack has had a couple of, Jack and John Clinton have had a couple of quotes over the years that I think are really important. Historic buildings, the biggest threat to historic buildings in this country is a lack of parking, simply because we're a community that relies on cars. So, if people can't get to buildings, they wither. But buildings also need a purpose, right? So, whether it's central office or it's WinCam or it's a preschool, buildings without a purpose, you know, will, will suffer. So, I think I tackled the second part of your question, but with respect to the first, the schematic design, when art, first of all, architects can't really develop a schematic design without what we call a space program. And I think I've mentioned this to the committee before. In other words, committee, architects and engineers need to know, what does the client need? So, for instance, at VO, we developed a space program in the high school. We did it for the McCall expansion. So, how many classrooms? How big are they? How many offices do you need? How many conference rooms do you need? How big are they? Are there any special adjacencies that you need? Should conference rooms be adjacent to administrative spaces or some other place? So, it's kind of, it, it's an articulation of what the space needs are and it has nothing to do with the actual site or where the building might be, right? So, for instance, we developed a space program for Winchester High School before we really figured out what we were going to do with the high school, because we first needed to say, this is what we need. So, that's an important piece of the project. But as well, remember the, the way we advocated for this, and I, I'd have to, maybe others in the audience will remember this better, I, I think we've had at least five presentations to town meeting that talked about the Carriage House in some respect, whether that was specifically mentioning it in the scope of the master plan. And there was a lot of discussion frankly at this table, because every building that you want to consider in the master plan is going to take more money. It's why, for instance, we didn't analyze the high school in the master plan, because we were building a new high school. So, we've talked a lot about the scope of this and the, one of the requirements of this SBC would in fact be an updated cost estimate of what it would take to abate, gut the building, do the envelope repair, and then build some central office option that, again, wouldn't be sort of pulled off a shelf, but in conversations with Judy and her team, what would you need? So, then, that was deemed to be important because, as you may know, the master plan says the cost to move central office to Carriage House and to abate and renovate and get rid of the mold, all that stuff, to literally do like a turnkey location for central office was around, I think it was 3.1 or 3.2, it was, it was around $3 million. Lynch was a similar cost. Actually, I think maybe Lynch was like $100,000 or $200,000 less, but they were both around $3 million. Important to note however, that the costs that are in the master plan are all presented equally as 2017 construction dollars. So, when we talk, and we did recently at a school committee meeting, that a new Lynch is five years away, but, but a new central office at Carriage House wouldn't need to be five years away. I agree with others who spoke this morning, it's, it's a couple of year project. So, we would have to carry some additional escalation if we were going to do it at Lynch. By that point, you know, maybe it's a wash. I'll say for anybody watching, we did in fact look at renting space for central office. That was part of the analysis. When we look at 20-year rental, because we typically bond capital projects for 20 years, so we assumed we would do something similar at the Carriage House, when you look at the successive lease renewals and you assume some reasonable three figures for fitting up space in Winchester, if you can even find the space, and by the way, we couldn't, it, again, it's a wash. So, the idea is, why would you want to rent space? Because at the end of 20 years, you're still renting space. So, the master plan really did take a deep dive and the expectation was that this schematic design exercise would include the kind of inspection and, and analysis that Judy has described. One other important piece of this that I want to be sure I mentioned, and depending upon how deep you've, you've looked in the information, Pete Lawson, who is our, you know, buildings rep for schools, he has been requesting for 10 years, about 10 years, a schematic design to replace the roof at the Carriage House, because it is in poor shape. There were visible leaks in the roof when I toured with the Historic Commission back in 2009.
10 years ago, yeah.
2010. And when we, and so, and Pete has brought this up, he was looking for, I think, $10,000. That was always a very hard sell because typically, capital requests are more like $25,000 and up. It's long been the town's practice that if you need less than 20 or 25 grand, you should find a way to afford it. And so, this, and of course, we all know, we were also dealing with issues in occupied buildings, which were naturally, you can understand, higher priorities, right? So, about the time that we developed the subcommittee that Jack described earlier, and this was around 2012, when it looked like we were really serious about maybe finding a use of the building, and I can't tell you exactly when it happened, but my understanding is that Pete did work with Jay and using some maintenance money at DPW, did some just spot repairs, but there was no roof replacement, nor was it intended to extend the life of the roof for any long amount of time. I mean, he was very clear about that. So, while some work has been done, it still needs the roof. So, the reason I share that with you is that in the capital cycle that led up to spring 2018 town meeting, Pete had urgently asked capital. He said, I need to get a design to replace the roof on the Carriage House. I'm worried about the Carriage House. At the same time, the school committee had prioritized, number one, the schematic design for the Carriage House. And, and it's in some of the documents you've received. We were, we were thinking around $85,000 for that work and of course, Pete had been asking for 10. And so, at the capital table, the question came up, well, you know, Pete, if you're looking to do a schematic design for the roof, to figure out what you need and what it would cost, and the schools are looking to do the whole thing soup to nuts, couldn't we roll this all in and would you be okay with that? And Pete actually said yes. He said, if we're going to move forward with the schematic design piece and so long as it's going to include an analysis of the roof, I'll withdraw my request. And that happened. And then we kind of merged those dollar values and said, just call it $100,000. So, it, we had every intention of meeting Pete's longstanding concern with the roof, to look at the condition of the building, whether it's hazardous materials, mold and so forth, and come up with an updated cost. I will also share back in 2012, when we were soliciting the SOIs. So, we created that committee in January of '12, between January of '12 and late that summer. We did engage architects and engineers, we got updated cost estimates, because we wanted to know what would it cost to address some of these concerns? And to, to put two things in order, in order of magnitude for you, there are some in this town who don't see a purpose in the Carriage House. It's been abandoned for many years. They'd like to tear it down. And they're not shy about it and I got to say, I respect that. I respect people just being straightforward about it. There, there were some who felt that that could be done for a very modest amount of money, like low five figures, just knock the building down and fill the hole. So, the committee should know we actually looked at that, because the school committee identified, I think, four or five scenarios. Number one, we continue to do nothing, which we decided is silly, because that's kind of what we've been doing for years, right? We haven't actually done anything, we've made no decision, what purpose does that serve? So, we took that off the table. The other was to, if we were to demolish the building, what would that really cost and who would actually pay for that? We brought in, again, professional cost estimator, and I can share, and this is all in the documents, the cost to actually cut and cap utilities, abate the hazardous materials, knock down the building and restore the site was around 100 and, I want to say it was 100, between 150 and 180,000 dollars. That's a big number. What's that?
165.
165, thank you. $165,000. So, if you, if you park that number for a moment in your mind, the other thing that we looked at was, the school committee, again, reluctant to surplus the building because then it's just gone for good. This idea that we might hang on to the building but get it ready for some tenant, whether it was a preschool or WinCam or anybody else who had a compliant zoning, you know, operation, the cost to do that abatement to, so the mold, the mildew, the asbestos and so forth, to restore the envelope, including the roof, to insulate the walls, new windows, new plaster, bring power to the exterior walls, and provide what we called at the time, kind of a, a big dumb box like you would at Burlington Mall, right? When a tenant moves out and another one moves in, that was around $800,000. Eight, it was around...
In 2012.
In, in 20, yes, that's right, in 2012.
Right, so eight years ago.
So, the committee, I just, I want the committee to understand, we, we've looked at this, but what was interesting was, it's, it's not one cost or the other that's so important, it's the delta. Because the committee understood, we're on the hook as a town for something. I mean, the committee doesn't have $180,000 in our operating budget, right, to knock down a building? And with all the other things that we need, all the other capital requests that we make for occupied buildings, how high of a priority would it be for the school committee to say our number one priority is to tear down the Carriage House? There's no appetite for that. So, what we recognized was, if we are on the hook for something, if it's just knocking the building down, that's where you start. And that's around $180,000. The cost to get it ready for a tenant is 800-something. You, you look for that delta and say, that's really the cost that extends the life of this building for any tenant that might have an operation that would, you know, be compliant. But, as Ellen explained in his remarks, when Consigly came on board, the phasing plan was turned on its head for the high school. So, there was even a draft letter of intent that was prepared between the school committee and WinCam on occupying the building. And that announcement was never made because it, the, the timing of the phasing kind of turned its on, turned it on its head and suddenly it was a non-starter. WinCam shared publicly in writing with the town in January of '14 that the Carriage House just wasn't going to work because of timing. And by fall town meeting of 2014, I was up in front of town meeting asking for money for a new master plan that would include the Carriage House, because we kind of went back to square one.
Okay.
Michelle, you wanted a heads up that we have about 15 minutes left.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Brian, did you have, you haven't had an opportunity to ask any questions or...
I'll, I'll...
I'm just gonna wrap, wrap up my opinion, just kind of close the loop in my own mind. I definitely respect the historic nature of the Carriage House and I value this, this public comment group because of the history they bring and the value of historical stuff they bring. What I'm struggling with and why I think Judy's recommendation is very responsible is that we are tasked as school committee to consider the, the education, the public education we're providing our kids. And so, if facilities that are not currently in play for classroom space right now, in our urgent state with Lynch and Morocco being where they are, I feel like we will be doing a disservice to the people who elected us because the expectation is that we get Morocco and Lynch functioning for the next five years, 10 years for Morocco, right? So, I respect the weight of the decision because of the value of the property and, and value in Winchester is very high. I mean, just the fact that it's 4,500 square feet, that is a huge amount of space in Winchester. So, I respect all of that. I'm just concerned that what Morocco and Lynch and VO and Ambrose and all the elementary schools and McCall and Lincoln, what they expect of us is right now to figure out classroom space, classroom size, and the facilities in that regard. And we've, we're just, I, I can respect that you've been doing this so long and I can't even imagine the frustration of having to push it off yet again, but in my opinion, for the school committee, and this is why I was asking, if others can take the, the responsibility, not, not the ownership or the lease or anything like that at this point, but just the study of the opportunities for the Historical Commission and Historical Society, if they could take that on for... for the Historical Commission and Historical Society, if they could take that on for a bit while we meet the responsibilities to our families of the classroom space. So at this point, I've really sat a while with it, given the historical nature of this property and how much I value our history, I've really sat with it, and I would like to take Judy's recommendation.
A cautious approach.
Yes, definitely.
So, and I think the good news is, is that we're not deciding today whether to restore the Carriage House or tear it down.
Right.
I think, I think the recommendation from Judy and the town manager is that we are sort of moving forward with assessing the building.
Exactly.
And we are engaging with that building again and taking a look at it and trying to figure out the nature of that building. It is what I understand from what Dr. Evans and what Lisa Wong have shared with me, is that they, they are re-engaging, they are looking at the structure, they are looking at the facility, and by doing that, nobody is saying that the next step is tear it down or restore it, but then let's figure out what the next step will be.
And I appreciate that responsible
Right. Anybody else?
I'd be remiss if I didn't at least express my sadness that this work hasn't already been done.
Yes, exactly.
The school committee voted in 2017 to put this on our capital agenda. The capital planning committee voted to put it on the warrant, finance committee supported it, town meeting supported it in 2018. So I have to sort of put that aside, my sort of frustration that it didn't get already done, and look at where we are now, because really, this, we should have this work on it, we should already have
I think it was paused because of the override, though, because of the town finances.
It
And some other factors, I think.
Yeah.
It, however it's been put aside
I hear your frustration, though.
I'm frustrated, that's why I wanted to get that out, because I now have to sort of put that aside and say, "Where are we right now?"
But also, twenty years.
The twenty years before that, too.
Twenty years before that, too, fair enough. Fair enough, but I mean, I was on the capital planning committee putting this forward.
Yeah.
Although I then got elected shortly thereafter, so I think it actually got voted after that. But, but where we are now, I do support the DPW doing the work that's been proposed. I think I'd like to know a little bit more about that. I realize it's not, it's, I mean, it is our building, it's not our dime if they're doing the work. I want to make sure that the intent is not to go in there and look at the building and say, "It's unsalvageable," because we intend to, I presume that any work that gets done in this building will be essentially a gut renovation. So a lot of things matter less, and some things matter more. The foundation, I'm not an architect, I'm not a structural engineer, I know foundation matters. We're gonna put a new roof on it, so while the roof matters, it's gonna get a brand-new roof, and mold matters, depending on how much there is, but if we're gonna gut renovate it, maybe it matters less. So I want to make sure that whatever the DPW does, they're keeping in mind that the future use of this structure will be a gut renovation. So I just don't want them to go in, like if you went into my house and you said, "Well, there's mold here, the cheapest way is to tear it down and start from scratch." I don't want them to go in with that mindset, I want them to go in there with the mindset of what we do with it. So, again, I'm okay with moving forward this way, I still just have a, just something bad in my gut about, that we didn't, how we got here.
Right.
So.
Karen?
So Chris, you had talked a little bit about the implications of surplusing a building, and I guess what happens with that? Is there like a mona, is there a financial transfer?
Oh, yeah.
There need not, there need not be, well, I think it's a good question, I can answer in thirty seconds, it just wouldn't, if, if we don't have a reason to, to keep a building, and this is a practice that's been followed over the years, you've heard at one point, Winchester had ten or eleven neighborhood elementary schools, right? So there was the Washington School, there was the Noonan School over by Lynch. So if, if a school committee has a property that it really believes it has no future use for, whether it's instruction or administration
As we did with the Sanborn House.
As we did with the Sanborn House, no, yep, absolutely, then a decision is made to surplus the property. So we say, "We give it up, we give it to the town."
You give it.
You, essentially, you're turning over the property to the town, and that rests with the select board.
Okay.
It's, I think we'd have to defer any discussion about financial implications about that, or, because while they are school committee buildings, and that puts us under the authority, we're always town buildings as well.
There are a lot of complicated decisions related to surplusing that I think we need to go into at a later meeting.
Once we, once we would reach that point
Right.
We would have to have more information about that, I would think, so we can make an informed decision.
Right, I mean, one of the major factors that really should lead us to be very cautious about that is the proximity of that to a school. And Chris is right about zoning restrictions, but there are also traffic implications, parking implications, safety implications that go beyond zoning, that I would want to discuss
That could be a whole meeting in and of itself.
Be a whole meeting in and of itself. So I think we should defer that, but I think it's a really, it's a great question, but we're not anywhere near that decision. I think we're part of it, you know, speaking to Brian's concern, the purpose of doing this sort of current status study is not to make a determination, because any building can be, parts of any building can be salvaged, it's just a matter of how much is going to cost and what is the appetite and the capacity of the town to do that. And so this gives us a sense for what current conditions are eight or nine years after last really heavily looked at it, and I think that'll allow us to make an informed decision about whether we want to spend any of the hundred thousand for a schematic design, and for what purpose.
And as we know, too, from doing VO and now approaching Lynch, the cost escalation of some of those things has gone up dramatically because of construction costs and renovation costs just in the Boston area, not even just in Winchester. So I think it's understanding some of that as well.
Yep.
And as I said, to Brian's point, I'm excited to see them do this, because it seems like they're fulfilling what we asked them to do in 2018, that they're beginning to take a look at the building, we're beginning to tackle it, we're, we're moving forward on that process.
Can I just second Brian's comment over sort of frustration? Because at a select board meeting on January twenty-seventh, it was stated that the board chose to pause the work after spring town meeting. If that happened, I'm deeply disappointed because I don't believe that was ever conveyed to the school committee. I'm not aware that there was any conversation, so if that happened, how and when that happened without the public's knowledge, the knowledge of the Historic Commission or Historic Society is deeply troubling to me as a process, particularly when it has just taken so long to get here. And I would just remind the committee, we didn't do it alone. The Historic Commission has been with us in lockstep, they were advocating for expanded investment for the feasibility, sorry, for the master plan, because we wanted to include the Carriage House. We actually had to go to town meeting twice. There were two asks for funding for the master plan, because we just weren't getting really satisfactory results after the first round of funding, we needed to get some more money. I'd like to ask a question of the superintendent, so at our capital meeting two weeks ago tomorrow, the assistant town manager shared with Capital that he'd had a conversation with you, and that it was important to the superintendent, he said, that we get moving on this project that was approved at spring town meeting. So if your recommendation now is that we pause, can you just clarify for me what changed?
We need to, well, we need to make a decision
Well, we have five minutes.
I know, we have five minutes. We need to make a decision one way or another. I think it's unfair to let the building continue to deteriorate, a decision needs to be made. I don't believe that there's an appetite to move ahead with plans for a schematic design and relocation of central office. At the same time, as Zina said, there's so many conflicting demands, there's so many other capital projects. So I, I would like to have more information so we can make an informed decision about the true cost of renovating, replacing the, the building and relocating central office. My conversation with the assistant town manager was prompted by discussions at this board, at this committee, that said, "Why have we not moved forward?" And I heard pretty clearly, as part of my goals, that you wanted some resolution to plans for central office. I mean, there's so many moving parts to this, you know, were we gonna get approval from Lynch for MSBA? What does our enrollment look like? Are we gonna install an elevator here? Can we use this building as a school? When will we need to? With four hundred and seventy-five housing units, you know, in the works in the next two years, I am very concerned about classroom space. I'm concerned about central office, but I'm less concerned than I am about classroom space, and so there are a lot of moving pieces to this, the override, the escalating costs, you know, the reality is, the three million dollar 2017 estimate to renovate Carriage House is probably more like four and a half million at this point by the time it gets repaired. That's a big ticket item, we want to make sure we are thoughtful about it and purposeful about it, and so I, I'm going into this with an open mind, with hope that we can keep the Carriage House and not have to demolish it or surplus it, but I am cautious about the costs, and so, and I want a, I want a clearer sense, because my feedback from DPW was that the deterioration has accelerated rapidly, and so the cost then to address that is also accelerating, so, so that's
And can I clarify something? Chris, Chris said you suggested the pause, and I don't think you suggested the pause. You're suggesting to move forward, we're just moving forward in a timeline, stepwise fashion, where we can get information, and if we get information that is, that we see as favorable, then we would indicate, "Let's move to the next step."
Right, I suggested a pause on moving forward with
With doing everything all at once.
Design, employing a whole hundred thousand.
Can I make a request? I don't know if it should be in the form of a workshop, or somehow we need to be having a conversation about the facilities, the state of facilities, the influx of new students, whether redistricting is an option, we need to bring all this information together as a committee and have this discussion much deeper. The Carriage House, the opportunities for Parkhurst, there's so much information I understand, but there's so much I don't know. And so I would like, in the future, as these DPW reports trickle down and the 40B housing information trickles down, I would like to bring it together as a committee and have this discussion so we can understand our process moving forward.
Judy, would that be a facilities subcommittee?
I think really, we need to partner with the town planner to get a better sense for the timelines. What I'd really love to see is a timeline for when some of these large 40Bs are gonna come online, when they're gonna be finished
Right.
When the kids are likely to move in, which is never in September, it's always mid-year.
Always see that trend.
And, and look at a timeline, I mean, it's probably an updated, time for an updated master plan discussion around, you know
Now that we know Lynch is approved.
Capital needs, particularly capital needs at Morocco, which we've, you know, started to look at in more detail, accelerating some of those repairs and so forth. And so lots of unknowns, which makes the discussion difficult, because we don't want to raise alarm bells about redistricting or
Right.
modulators or anything like that, but we do need to have discussions.
Well, that's why I was wondering if you'd like to establish a working group, or
We could do a working group and then report back to the whole group if you want, or we could have a workshop.
Instead of, to Zina's point, instead of taking
You're looking to, for the whole committee to be
Right, but I'm saying, instead of taking things piecemeal, which is what we're doing now
No, I would like it all, and I would read it, and then I would come to the workshop to participate in a meaningful discussion, whether a subcommittee puts together the information.
That's what I was thinking, right.
I don't need anybody to filter it for me, I just want the information, and then I want to have a conversation, an open conversation, given the, the information warehouse right here.
Right.
I would like to just have a conversation
Right, which is why, right, which is why we provided you as much as we could with the Carriage House before we came.
But that's not, that's not what I'm talking about, I don't want to just know about the history of the Carriage House, I'm talking about
Right, everything, I hear you.
Yeah, we get it.
It's a workshop.
But I'm saying, given the information we have on the Carriage House, I would think that if we had some kind of a working group to work with Dr. Evans to bring that information together to us, not filtering it, but
That's what I'm saying, I, I'm fine however you want to gather the info, it's easier.
I would think it would be easier than
And it's summertime, I don't think we need to tack on anything more.
Yeah.
Well, come on.
Can I offer a closing thought, based on, pick up what Zina just said? Although master plans fly at a very high altitude, it came up with an inescapable conclusion that I think we can all agree with. So public school districts have to have some sort of administrative offices, right? We, we can't function without Judy and Ellen and Jen and everybody, and these are important people, they need to have a home, it needs to be a thoughtful home. Their home has to be in one of the buildings that are ours, unless we want to rent space. And as I've said, we did that analysis, and it's in the information Frida forwarded yesterday afternoon. So from a financial standpoint, the rental piece, it's off the table. So quite simply, there's no room for central office at the high school, right? There's no room at McCall, there's no room at Lincoln, there's no room at VO, so we quickly come down to three properties that are left, and, and this is explored in the master plan. Could we do a central office at a new Lynch? Sure. Could we do it at a new Morocco? Sure. Could we do it at a Carriage House? Sure. For all the reasons we've discussed recently about 40B and continued subdivision and our concerns about enrollment growth, especially because we just went to Capital, and yours truly had the pleasure of explaining to Capital why we needed to spend a million dollars on an elevator at Parkhurst, because we need the building urgently, we think we're gonna have kids in this building. So wherever central office goes, you gotta have a home, and it should be thoughtful, it should be planful, and it's gonna cost us something.
Right.
Because, as you said earlier, Michelle, the MSBA will not reimburse either at the Carriage House
Or at Lynch.
Or at Lynch. And about five thousand square feet for central office is a big chunk of space wherever it goes. It, it would substantially take up, for instance, the whole, the kindergarten wing at VO on the first floor of the building. So it has an impact at the new Lynch, in design discussions and cost discussions, and it would, you know, certainly, we'd have to think carefully about how we would accommodate it at the Carriage House. So it's not, it's an important thing that I would just suggest, we shouldn't keep kicking the can.
Right.
The, the, the purpose of this, of this request at town meeting that was funded, although it certainly would preserve the Carriage House, the purpose of that article was not to preserve the Carriage House, the purpose was to confirm that that was a good long-term home for central office. It would sort of hit two birds with one stone, right? Permanent home, save the building, both of which are important.
Right, absolutely. So I'm gonna move forward with Judy about establishing a facilities working group. If anybody is interested in being a part of that, I would, no more than two committee members could be on that, let me know. And I, we're gonna have to stop now for today and defer any further discussion to a future meeting, because the superintendent had to be at another meeting this morning, so
Since that's something you're gonna talk with Judy about, I wanna, I wanna second, I have the same interest Zina does, I think it'd be more meaningful if there's a way to do it with the whole committee participating.
I think the idea would be for this working group to establish a timeline to the way to talk about these things and establish a workshop, but somebody needs to be, somebody needs to spearhead that and work with Dr. Evans on that, and be able to pull that together, because that's a lot of information. So, because if we tried to talk about all of our buildings in one day at a meeting, that would be a good all-day meeting. So I think not in terms of filtering information, but in terms of prioritizing and timelining.
Gathering information?
And gathering, yeah.
Well, I'd be happy to join you if you were looking for help.
And this is gonna be a list of all the things, all the unknowns and uncertainties, it's gonna be part of the problem, it's gonna be just like, I'm not saying it's not a good idea
Right.
It's just gonna be looking like, how much longer do we need Morocco? How much longer do we need Lynch? Well, that depends on a million decisions that this committee's not even gonna make. Committee, a year or two, three years down the road, might make those decisions.
Right.
So we're not gonna lock them into something.
Nope.
And so, just as complicated.
Right. Okay.
Move to John?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for coming.